Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Miami Township Trustee Meeting of December 4th, 2023. Tonight, we're going to go through our regular business as quickly as possible and save room for my presentation and comments by our special guest, Vesper Energy. So I'd like to call this meeting to order and entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of both November 6th and November 20th.
You want to do it together or separate?
Let's do them together. I think we've read better than early.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions, but they were made. That's good for me.
Hearing no discussion, may we vote on the adoption of minutes?
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the minutes of November 6th and November 20th, 2023, as presented. Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Okay. I entertain a motion to approve our payment of bills in the amount of $46,754.85. That's general fund 6,854.07, fire fund $36,340.10, EMS zero, cemetery fund $588.1, road and bridge $2,972.67. Can I get a motion to pay our bills?
I so move.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
No.
Hearing no discussion, may we vote?
It's been moved and seconded to approve payment of bills in the amount of $46,754.85 as enumerated. Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
All right. Here's our list of correspondence.
I don't feel the need to read all these. It's on the...
Agenda.
On the agenda, and that serves a positive public information function, but...
Okay, Don. I would like to point out that we had the following people send in letters regarding the topic tonight, which is industrial solar in the township, all in support. That was Libby Rudolph, Dan Rudolph, Bob Brekka, Ellis Jacobs, Donna Denman, Beth Holyo. Other than that, sure, I'll skip it. Fire department report, Denny?
Since last meeting, 22 EMS incidences, six fire. We only had one fire mutual aid request. Let's see here. I'm going to probably go from backwards here. Ground ladder testing was last week. All ground ladders did pass successfully. Engine 82, you're aware, we had pump issues with that. Atlantic will be here tomorrow evening to start diagnosing that and figuring what we need to do to fix that. The 1,200 feet of five-inch supply line that cost nearly $12,000 arrived the other day. So we'll get that in service once Engine 82 is actually back in service because I'm going to have to pull that hose off to replace a sensor, so no sense in doing additional work. We are now in the implementation phase. I told you guys, actually, in one of the documents I provided you guys a couple of weeks ago, that we would be moving to a new asset and checklist application. That's all part of our ESO software that integrates with our patient care reports. So we'll be able to basically track a lot of our EMX expenses significantly more accurately, more timely, and gives us just in general a much better way of not only tracking expendable equipment, but also making sure that we've got good documentation on any types of apparatus daily checks and whatnot. And that's actually... Oh, no. No, I'm sorry. Forgot something. A little longer discussion item, but Green County Health Department approached about five fire departments in Green County that are known to have statistically somewhat higher-than-usual opioid overdoses. As you may be aware, the state is looking at targeting basically machinery that would be available to supply Narcan for opioid overdose. That's really hard to say for some strange reason. And so we are going to participate in giving them limited access to our patient care data. They'll basically be scraping that data directly out of ESO using software. They don't have access to specific information like patient names or anything like that. So the HIPAA confidentiality requirements have been approved by the prosecuting attorney's office, so I don't have any HIPAA concerns or anything like that. Best part is, it didn't cost me a dime. The Health Department is paying for it for the data extraction from ESO, and I'm anticipating that will probably start next month. It's us, Beaver Creek, Fairborn, Xenia... Actually, that's it. Us, Beaver Creek, Fairborn, Xenia. That's all I got.
Okay. Do you have anything more for the fire department? No?
I don't.
Will there be a cemetery road report tonight? Probably not.
I don't think so.
Okay. Moving along. Fiscal officer report. We have a couple of resolutions to pass real quick. We have Resolution 223-46, whereas it is for permanent appropriations, amendment to permanent appropriations, whereas it is an ongoing process to accurately appropriate funds according to the needs of the township. Now, therefore, the trustees authorize amending the following appropriations: general fund increase of $157.50, gas tax, social security by $2976, cemetery fund contracted services increase $1,556, fire fund Medicare increase $335. Do I have a motion to appropriate these funds?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? May we call roll, Xenia?
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2023-46, amendment to permanent appropriations as enumerated. Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
The resolutions.
Okay, we have a second one from our fiscal officer. Resolution 2023-47, whereas the tax commissioner has authorized the transfer of funds as follows: $269,175.85 from the capital fund 4901 to 2023 capital project fund for an ambulance acquisition. The Miami Township trustees authorize fiscal officer to do so immediately. Can I get a motion for that?
I so move.
And any further discussion?
No. You guys don't know about this, but Chris pursued this, the details are another topic, but he should be saluted for freeing up $270,000.
May we vote, please?
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2023-47, transfer of funds as specified. Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
All right. Any more for fiscal officer who is not here?
I have one additional thing related to that transfer. That transfer is for the purchase of a new ambulance that's being built as we speak. Probably won't be delivered until midsummer, I think. That ambulance is going to cost $336,037. We've just helped it out, helped that cost out with $269,175.85, leaving a gap of $66,861.75. Our fire fund is very, very tight, and we expect it to be very tight in the short future, anyway. We're working on that diligently. Our general fund has $200,000 in its account to carry over into 2024. To be a little more fiscally responsible and to keep our bookkeeping straight and help us keep track of what funds we have to spend, what different accounts, I would like to move that we transfer $66,861.15 from the general fund into the new capital fund, 2023 capital fund acquisition, for a total of $336,037 to cover the cost of this medic when it is delivered.
When will that be? Sometime this summer?
Sometime in the summer, last I heard. But it allows us to accurately appropriate funds from different funds going forward, both as a temporary amount as of January 1 and a permanent amount as of April 1. So those funds will be moved, they're committed, we know they're paid.
There's needs to do this tonight.
Yeah.
And did you make a motion?
I did. I'll second.
This is sudden, but it makes sense, so shall we vote, Xenia?
It's been moved and seconded to transfer 66... Make sure I get these numbers right, please, Chris. $66,861.75 or 15?
15.
15. $66,861.15 from the capital fund to the new 2023 capital fund for purchase of the medic. Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Okay. Any answer for fiscal officer?
No.
Zoning inspector report?
Just a couple of things. I issued a one permit since I last spoke with you for a very small addition to a house, a little tiny back porch and steps, but nevertheless, it was an alteration. The zoning commission met on schedule. They believe that they are satisfied with the language they've developed for revising the temporary use permits under the BZA Chapter 18, and they have probably come to a consensus on what solar regulations they are proposing to be adopted in the code, but they're still working on the wording that expresses the concept they have in mind. Part of that has been looking at other adopted codes because the sample text we have, they couldn't seem to plug into to get exactly what they wanted to say.
Can you summarize what the zoning commission wants to recommend?
Well, I've always been a little hesitant to speak for them, but I would say in general they want to... I'm going to put it in the negative. Not allow solar as for the purpose of selling electricity to anyone. All the solar you need for your own use on your own property is fine. They're also emphasizing rooftop solar so that land isn't taken out of cultivation for solar arrays, but if rooftops aren't adequate or appropriate for the situation, then ground mounted would be permissible.
That's roughly what was in the sample, when at least there was part of that.
Yeah. It's trying to qualify how you say that it's for your use. I'll give you an example. Suppose you're a farmer and you need a large amount of electricity at one time of the year, but not a steady amount all year long. Can you have enough panels to supply that need for a month or three months or whatever it is, and then... But once you have them, still connect into the grid and sell that back? These regulations are always a little bit tricky because the rules that the utilities have about how you get credit for electricity keeps changing. But anyway, that's the details that they're trying to work out. And where it's also... It's not one of those things you can quantify because our possible needs, even on a personal level for solar, may go up as people want more electric vehicles or, you know, other needs than we currently have now. And at some point, maybe the rooftop basis of that's about the right amount won't be the right amount. But it's making a stab at what seems appropriate today with the knowledge that it may have to be revised in the future because it's a little difficult to predict what the future's going to be.
Thank you. Anything else for Zane?
I have two things. One, I would like to ask the board if we can continue our tradition of offering gift cards towards zoning commission and BZA for their efforts over the past year.
Yeah, absolutely. Do we need to vote on it?
Yeah.
We've done it each year, yeah.
I move that we reward our volunteer boards with Christmas or holiday gift cards.
I think we need to specify how much.
There are hundreds of cards.
Let's put that in the motion.
Hundred-dollar gift cards. There are 10.
I'll second.
Now you've wrecked the surprise of the... What is this supposed to...
I second.
Any more discussion? Good. May we vote?
It's been moved and seconded to present each member of the zoning commission and BZA with $100.00 holiday gift cards from the board. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Ms. Richard?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
I have one more thing. May not be too much of an interest to a wider audience, but over the past, gosh, year, year and a half, we have spent considerable time and Chair Moore has spent considerable effort in trying to rethink our zoning department, as it were, to make it a little more efficient, a little more responsive. She has done multiple online applications for various permits, and I want to thank her for those efforts. In addition to that, she has also made efforts to redirect some of the responsibilities to different personnel within the zoning department. Some of that has been accomplished, some of it is still to be decided, but we met at our last meeting and wanted to pretty much finalize the direction that we wanted to And so what we're going to do is we're going to make some of those changes in personnel, and as a result, this will be Mr. Zoff's last meeting this evening, and I'm going to make a motion to terminate his employment as of today.
I'm going to recuse myself from this. I feel like my bond with Richard is... Takes me out of the rational world.
That's perfectly fine.
It's been moved and seconded to terminate Mr. Zoff's employment with the township as zoning inspector. Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Now, in addition, finally, I don't have, frankly, enough words to thank Richard for the work that he's done since he's been here. It's a thankless job 99.9% of the time. It's constant badgering by a lot of people, and but some, I get along just fine with them. So I was... I feel like I was there when we put you onto the zoning commission and here when you're leaving, and as a whole, I really appreciate everything that you did, and I hope I'm speaking for the rest of the board. And that's all I have for zoning tonight.
Okay.
There is a motion.
We did vote. Okay. I think that's all for our regular business. We have special guests here today, Vesper Energy, who are the developers of the Keywood project, whose application has been denied, but the process is still pending. I'd like to say, for those of you who don't know, there's two different sizes of solar going on in the village. There's what we call industrial solar, which is above 50 megawatts, basically above about 300 acres, and then there's small solar that's under 50 megawatts that is regulated by the township trustee, the township zoning resolution. And so just a brief history, somewhere around 2021, before I was on the board, we began hearing news of this solar development. Keywood, 175 megawatts, nearly 2,000 acres, and it was a sharp learning curve, and we quickly learned that everything above 50 megawatts is regulated by the state, and so it was out of our jurisdiction. We were asked to become... We were urged to become... So we had no say in the process, except for to be an intervenor in the state's process at the PSB. And we were urged by neighbors primarily to be intervenors. And anybody who wants to correct me on any of this is fine. Through a long, arduous... After a long, arduous process, in grief and heartache, some of the neighbors, it was denied, and it was denied on the basis of opposition. What do they call it?
Public interest.
Public interest.
Convenience and necessity.
Say it again?
Public interest, convenience, and necessity.
But it wasn't denied on the basis of technical or environmental damage. And so then you appealed to the Supreme Court, and I still don't understand where all that went, but we were asked again as trustees, do we want to do a cross appeal where we are still urging them to deny it on the basis of environmental and technical things? And we went along with that once, and after something else happened, we were asked again. In the interim, I personally had begun to investigate the environmental claims that were brought to us over the years and visiting sites and reading and visiting more sites. And I personally came to feel that the environmental damage claims, the destruction of farmland impacting of farmland, the leaching of contaminants didn't hold water. And in our last vote, I meant to vote no, but instead I abstained. I did not vote to go ahead and continue to support opposing it based on those claims. The other two did, and so we're still involved in a cross appeal in this process. So I just want... So meanwhile, SB 57 or 157 gave the Green County commissioners the ability, the power to restrict solar in all or any part of the township and any of the Green County townships. And their policy was, we're going to let the townships decide. If a township wants to restrict, we'll restrict it for them. So Cedarville and Xenia put a restriction forever on all industrial solar in their townships. I say forever, well, that's for as long as... Until it gets overturned by another county commission. But we opted... Initially, we opted to not, to just let the chips fall where they may not do that, and then we were urged again, and we put a two-year moratorium on just everything south and east of the Little Miami River, which is the Keywood area.
Technically, we asked the county commission to do that and make it...
Yes. Technically, we asked the county commission to do that. The other one was six months. This was two years. That started in June, July of '23, so will end in July of '25. So that's where we are now. And I wanted to say, there's stuff going on with our... You heard in Richard's report, the zoning commission is working out the small solar, you know, everything under 300 for the township. So far, I don't think Jennifer Adams, I think you participated last month, there has not been much public participation in that. And it's a lengthy process that goes here to the Green County, regional planning and back to us, and somewhere along the line, I think there's at least two public hearings. And I urge people to pay attention to that because I'd hate to get all the way to the public hearing to have it be the first read of the public. It's a much better process if the public stays informed all along. So at this point, Chris, would you like to say some few words about how you view our policymaking?
I guess, being the longest-serving member of the township, the experience that I've had with members of the public and in public meetings and hearings and the like, zoning commission and trustee public hearings for zoning changes and all, it's always struck me that there's not quite a 100% understanding of how policy is or is not produced in a township. And I just thought I'd take a second to review how that procedure works. Townships and counties are the same inasmuch as they're children of the Ohio Legislature. We are not authorized to make any laws other than those granted to us by the legislature, and that includes anything to do with land use planning. We have zero, as a board, we have zero ability to make policy. The policy for land use planning in a township is driven by the township residents. We represent the township residents. It is the will of the township residents that we hope to follow. I mean, that's, at least personally, that's what I felt I was elected to do, was to represent the will of the township residents. The way that's accomplished is we establish a zoning commission, 1962 or 1963, and the township zoning commission is that five-member board, which is authorized to work on policy through zoning. The main way that they're authorized to do that is to establish a comprehensive land use plan for their township. They, and only they, not us, produce this comprehensive land use plan. That's done through a strictly public process. Every deliberation, every public hearing, every part of the comprehensive land use plan that's put together through the township is public, and any member of the public, obviously, is welcome to come and voice their opinion as to what they feel is important for their township in land use plans. This comprehensive land use plan was adopted, I believe, in 2013. Most land use plans are projected out 20 years. That doesn't mean they can't be changed at any time. They can be changed every six months if the zoning commission felt the need to, but they're supposed to kind of make this plan... But they're supposed to kind of make this plan far enough out that it's not sort of a day-to-day roadmap. It's, it's more of a where do we want to go? And then, once where we want to go has been decided, then the zoning commission starts working on zoning policy, zoning procedures and policies as kind of the roadmap of how to get there.
Could I just insert?
Certainly.
The zoning commission only is residents outside of municipal boundaries, not in Clifton, not in Yellow Springs. So the zoning commission members are sort of rural township.
So now, if everything's working perfectly, residents make their wishes known. The zoning commission takes that into consideration and writes a good, strong, comprehensive land use plan. I think we did that 10 years ago, reflecting what they've learned. From that point on, everything that they're doing in zoning, the minimum, the minimum land use for a residential is always the case. You know, how many acres per single-family home? How many feet of road frontage? Those things are decided based on their interpretation of the comprehensive land use plan. Now, here's where it does come to us. Once they've decided that they're happy with some particular zoning ordinance that they're working on, for example, Richards is talking about a one that they're working on right now, it goes to the county regional planning for review. And basically, that review is just sort of a double, you know, a double check whether what they've written does indeed reflect the township's comprehensive land use plan. And if it does, generally, they will then recommend to this board that we adopt what they've recommended. They don't have to. And if they, if they think that it is not in line with the comprehensive land use plan, they will recommend that we do not adopt it because of that very reason. It then comes to us. This is after multiple public hearings. And the zoning commission has to have public hearings on these, on these new regulations. The board trustees have to have public hearings on these new regulations before it's voted on. And so then it finally gets to us. Now, you could say, this is the part where we, you know, we make policy. I guess you could say that because, let's just say that a recommendation comes to us that says, I don't know how it would get through, but it says the zoning commission has changed that from three acres and 300 feet to unlimited amount of residences and no, and no, and no limitation on how many feet of road frontage, even though the comprehensive plan says that we are a, we are a agricultural township and we support, and the public supports farmland preservation. Well, if you have unlimited ability to build, build housing, that, in my opinion anyway, conflicts with the comprehensive land use plan. And as a board, we could then reject that recommendation from the zoning commission and not adopt this, this plan for unlimited housing. In a fashion, that would be creating policy. Flip it over to, flip it over to, to virtually anything. It could be industrial, it could be solar, any of those sorts of things. But in my opinion, the board has to be convinced that it's in accordance with the land use plan. So this land use plan, and I'm just about done with this land use plan.
You're going to get a copy?
Can, can be, yeah, can be, can be amended at any time, can be revised, revisited at any time. There's no restriction on that. And the zoning commission makes that decision. They decide that they would like to hear what the residents have to say on a new subject, let's call it solar. And so they would say, this is what we're considering. We'd like their input, blah, 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 blah. They hold these hearings. And based on that, they revise the comprehensive land use plan, and it addresses solar or wind or water power or, or any number of things. But let's just do solar as an example. Once it's in the comprehensive plan, then they write new zoning ordinances reflecting what they feel is the will of the residents. And again, then it comes to us, and we either approve or deny those new zoning ordinances based on that. So that's where we are. I just want everybody to understand, and I appreciate their, certainly appreciate. There's the plant right there. I appreciate your participation.
It's also online on our website.
And I appreciate you, any comments that you may have. But please keep in mind, we cannot make policy at this level for or against. So with that, I'll give it back to the chair.
We can merely be, at this level, merely be interveners in a state process.
That's true.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to introduce Lindsay Workman from Vesper and Hannah.
Larkin.
Hannah Larkin from Vesper.
Thank you so much, trustee. Thanks, Marilyn. My name is Hannah Larkin. I am with Vesper Energy, and this is my colleague Lindsay Workman. I'm just going to go over our brief agenda for this evening before we dive in. We're going to start with some introductions. I'll introduce myself and the company. And then we'll talk a bit about our new proposed solar project called Aviation Energy Center. Then we will talk, well, Lindsay will talk about community engagement and the benefits we expect to see from this project. And then finally, we'll open up the floor for questions, comments, as you all deem appropriate. So as Marilyn said, my name is Hannah Larkin. I'm a development manager with Vesper Energy. I oversee the Kingwood Solar Project and our Aviation Energy Center project. I joined Vesper about six months ago. I have a background, I have a Master's of the Environment in Urban Resilience and Sustainability from the University of Colorado. I have an undergraduate Bachelor's of Science degree in Global and Environmental Health from the University of Rhode Island. I currently live in Rhode Island. I just relocated from Colorado about six months ago. When I'm not working at Vesper, you'll find me out with my dog somewhere. Love, I'm an outdoor enthusiast, so I love skiing in the winter and being on the beach and going hiking in the summer. That's a little bit about who I am. And I'll pass to Lindsay to talk about who she is.
Hi, everyone. I know, I see a lot of familiar faces in the room, so nice to see you again. My name, like Hannah mentioned, I am Lindsay Workman. I am the Community Affairs Manager for Vesper Energy, working in Ohio and a few other Midwest states. I'm born and raised, I'm a born and raised Ohioan. I'm from a little town called Jackson, Ohio. If any of you recognize it or know the name, I don't expect many too, but. I came back to Ohio for this job, and I'm very much enjoying being back here and back in the Buckeye State and back and spending so much time here in Green County. I am an avid history buff, huge history buff. I really appreciate the history that goes to in here. And when I'm not working, I also am a dog mom, and so I'm hiking. And with my dogs, we actually were just at John Bryan just a couple of weeks ago. And this past weekend, we hiked the Simon Kit and Trace. So, yeah. Thank you for having us, and I look forward to our conversation today.
Awesome, thank you, Lindsay. So as you all know, Vesper Energy is responsible for the Kingwood Solar Project. But for those of you who do not know, Vesper Energy is a U.S.-based renewable energy developer, owner, and operator. We were founded in 2015 under the name Len Lease Energy Development. Our parent company, Len Lease Energy, or Len Lease, it's not a very familiar name, but you might recognize some of their more notable works in the United States. They're responsible for developing Trump Towers in Chicago and the 9/11 Memorial in Manhattan. Yeah. Interesting, right? So the success of Len Lease Energy Development led to an acquisition by Magnetar Capital, a U.S.-based capital investment firm, in 2020. That, that acquisition enabled Vesper Energy to become what it is today. It allowed us to grow the business and to continue developing projects and shift into an owner and operator structure. We have the same core leadership team that we had from the early days as Len Lease Energy Development. And one thing that's really notably changed in our business model is we've invested really deeply in community engagement. We have a robust community engagement or community affairs team, one of the most robust teams in the industry. That's a direct testament of Vesper's commitment to deep, thoughtful engagement with the communities which host our projects and the value we place in local knowledge. Our community affairs director, Jackie, is in the bathroom. Good for her to say hello at the end of, end of the evening. So as you all know, we're here tonight to talk about the Aviation Energy Center. This is a new proposed project. We're exploring siting opportunities right now in the Miami Township, Xenia Township, and Cedarville Townships. Our project would utilize an existing interconnection agreement with PJM to connect to the electrical grid along the Clark and Green 138 KV Transmission Line, right here in the Miami Township. This interconnection agreement is an asset. It's a product of rigorous multi-year studies conducted by PJM, and allows for up to 175 megawatts to be injected into the electrical grid locally. However, the actual size of Aviation Energy Center has yet to be determined. Our goal for this project is to design it in collaboration with our community partners, and that's why we're here this evening. We are here to introduce the project and solicit feedback from the township trustees and the public on really everything about this project, siting, design considerations, like should we incorporate agrivoltaics? How far should the setbacks be from infrastructure? Should we vegetative screenings? All of those design considerations. We are, Lindsay's going to talk a little bit more about our community giving program, but we're here to solicit feedback on where those funds should be distributed. Engagement preferences, how do you all want to be engaged with by Vesper Energy? So we're looking for feedback on all of these things tonight. We have been engaging with the community for the past year, Lindsay mainly. And we've learned that setbacks are a priority. So we are committed to 300-foot setbacks for the Aviation Energy Center project, to 300-foot setbacks on public roads, residential property lines, state parks, and public lands. And then I'll pass it over to Lindsay to talk about the work she's been doing in the community to date.
Thank you, Hannah. As she mentioned, I have been here for the past year. I've met, like I said, many of you throughout that time. And I have been able to engage with over 25 organizations throughout the community, many of which are located right here in Miami Township. And through that process, I've heard the feedback about the project, about, you know, what Vesper should do and could do. And that's what she said, that we're here to listen, and we're here to figure out if there's a way to move forward with you guys right along with us. Our engagement to date has been pretty robust. It has just been me. I'm very happy to have Hannah now, so I can kind of put some, some of the work on her. But I, I very much appreciate just the heart and the soul of this community. It's very evident that you guys care about the land and that you care about where you live, and we do too. We want to be good neighbors. We want to do things right, and we want to do right by you. And so, yeah, that's kind of where we're at with this. We've already been working with a few different organizations. For instance, our community giving program has given over $20,000 to different organizations throughout the community, notably the Camp Clifton 4-H Camp and the John Bryan Estate Parks. They, they have testimonials. They weren't able to be here tonight, but we do have their testimonials if anyone would like to hear those. And we're looking forward to continuing those partnerships in a more robust way. I just recently toured the great Council House that's getting built, and I'm very excited about it, and it's, it's going to be a great addition to the community. And as, hopefully, we can work with you guys on continuing to build up this community to be as great as it can be. Yeah. And we would, as she mentioned, we are here to solicit feedback. We are here to, to hear if you think we should be having, you know, quarterly block parties or whatever you think is the best thing for us to do. We want to do that. We want to be good neighbors, and we want to listen. We want to take what you say to heart and make sure that we can implement in a way that is meaningful and substantial for both, for both of us.
Yeah, and we can host public listening sessions. We can engage in this format, if that's the preference. We're open to one-on-one meetings. So we'd really love to hear from you all about how you prefer to be engaged with.
Yeah, so as I mentioned before, we have a community giving program. It is, the Q4 is actually just, just ending up right now. It's, it's for us, it's a way for us to, to give to programs in the community that are already making a difference. And for us to kind of plug in where we're needed to help support those causes and those, those organizations that are really vital to the community. And if you guys have any suggestions on who we should be talking to for that, I would love to hear them. And, yeah, as I mentioned, the recipients this last quarter were the Camp Clifton 4-H Camp and the John Bryan State Park. I don't know if any of you have been out there, but we, we sponsored two water refill stations right in, right in the state park. And so with Camp Clifton, I believe, we're repairing their septic system. So anything we can do to ensure that, that the organizations are run smoothly and are able to help more citizens and more residents of the community, we want to do. So please, if you have more questions about the community giving program, please come to me after. I can, I'm more than happy to talk more about it and more than happy to put you in the right place to get those funds to the organizations that you think need them.
So. Thanks, Lindsay. And Lindsay and Jackie have done a phenomenal job. It's such an easy application. If you go to our website, you can fill out an application. The funds are distributed quarterly, and you're able to reapply if you're, if you get funds or if not, you're, you can reapply as many times as your organization needs. But our community giving program is not the only way our solar project would benefit this community. We, Ohio has a pilot program that we would plan to participate in that would give $9,000 per megawatt of installed capacity to the county. $7,000 of that would be distributed across the jurisdictions where there's land in the project. The additional $2,000 or remaining $2,000 would go to the county's general fund. We would also, we would expect actually that the pilot program alone to generate millions of dollars for the Miami Township over the life of the project. We'd also expect millions of dollars in landowner payment to those landowners who participate in these projects. During the construction period, over 100 jobs would be created. These are estimate numbers on a, you know, roughly 100-megawatt facility. But as I mentioned before, the size of this project is flexible. So the numbers would shift a little bit, but that's what we would expect on, in this ballpark. And solar is compatible with an agricultural community like Miami Township. The preservation of agricultural land, solar panels preserve, sorry. Solar panels preserve agricultural land by protecting against residential development and commercial development as well as resting the soil beneath the panels, allowing for additional carbon sequestration into the soil. Vesper is committed to agrivoltaics. So if that's of interest to the community, we'd love to incorporate that into this project as well to maximize the carbon sequestration ability of the land. Additionally, we are keeping farmers farming. These landowner payments offer a way for farmers to offset the volatility of weather and commodity markets by providing a steady, reliable income stream. This is something Lindsay and I are obviously really passionate about. These are the end of our prepared remarks, but I do invite you all to check out our project website, www.aviationenergycenter.com. You can learn more about our project. You can learn facts about solar projects. We brought a lot of fact sheets as well. And Lindsay and I are a resource for you all. We're here to support you in learning about solar. It's a really complex industry. Anyone who says they know it all, they're probably not telling the truth. So we're here to be a resource for you, address questions, and encourage anyone who's interested to apply to our community grant program.
I have some questions.
Yeah, is that okay?
Yes. Moller, Sharon Muller.
How are you intending to keep the foliage from growing up around this?
That's a great question, yeah.
Herbicides?
I'm sorry?
Herbicides?
Pesticides. Yeah, sometimes herbicides are used. Vesper Energy, though, is committed to using environmentally friendly.
Sheep?
Yeah, sheep is one way, that's considered.
Is that the plan for this facility?
It really depends. So Vesper as a company is rolling out agrivoltaics, including sheep grazing, on our projects. But for this project, it really depends. If that's something that we hear the community wants, we'll absolutely consider that.
Well, I have another question.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't think solar is absolutely necessary. But I don't see why you don't plan on putting it on already despoiled land, like quarries and parking lots.
Yeah.
Instead of agricultural land. Instead of agricultural land, because the world is getting very hungry, and we are very lucky to live in these lake states where we have water, we have good soil, and we can grow food in the world here. And it's not a good idea to just cover it up and not be able to produce food here. And you say, well, it's temporary, but I'm thinking that my little great-granddaughter will be 46 years old when they're not family.
Yeah, and we are absolutely interested in exploring brownfield opportunities. If there are sites folks have in mind, we've been in communication with Xenia Township, and their administrator offered brownfield sites for us to explore. What we found is that they're not large enough to cite really any megawattage, so that's kind of the challenge that we face, that we're looking for sites that have to meet.
And this one, it's just going into the grid. It's not going to benefit the people in Green County necessarily.
It depends. Yeah, so electricity flows where the demand, it goes where the demand is.
It goes where the best price is.
Sort of, but it's also managed by grid operators who distribute energy where there's demand. So, electrons don't know where they're getting sent. They just flow to the path of least resistance.
Go to the biggest bidder.
Well, potentially. I'm not an electrical engineer, but if we want to host a listening session or a learning session, we could bring in our electrical engineers to talk more about the flow of electricity on our transmission grid.
I don't know anything about that.
Well, we've been learning together.
You should know. You should be able. I don't care about the technicalities of it. I think that, looking at the history, I'm old, and I, my mother, I'm 85. My mother was very, very concerned about all of the strip mines and how little the coal companies had to do to fix things. And just reading yesterday about the mountaintop mining in West Virginia, nobody has ever made them repair that yet. And I am very antsy about dealing with big energy, and that's what you are.
Yeah, and I feel you. I am a passionate environmentalist. That is why I got into this industry. And unfortunately, the oil and gas industry have, coal especially, have done a lot of damage. They have not reclaimed their land. We put into place decommissioning bonds so that the money is set aside at the project's start, the operations date, to remove those facilities when that time comes. And then additionally, I've written into leases that we will not use glyphosate, which I can't pronounce, but I think you know what I mean. We won't use environmentally hazardous, what was it?
Roundup.
Roundup, yes. We've written that into leases, that we won't use that on our facilities. So, if that is something that the community cares about, I know I care about that.
We can make it happen.
We can absolutely consider that.
Could I just, real quick, you just said, bonds for retirement?
Yeah, decommissioning bonds.
Because that was not in the previous proposal.
Okay. It most likely was included in there. We call it, though, remediation bonds oftentimes. So, they're usually like either remediation bonds or decommissioning bonds. They have a couple of other words for them.
I may have misunderstood, but I understood that there was, that the cash was not down for decommission bond.
Yeah.
But we don't need to argue with that.
No, that's okay.
Have that in the future, be great.
At least now, all of our projects include decommissioning bonds. I can't speak to, you know, fast.
Lisa Abel and Ben Crandall.
Hi. And maybe I missed the intro to this in another meeting, but I guess I would like you to maybe just take a step back and explain to us why this area and what percent of ag land are you, I mean, I know you have a range of, but so that we can get a better sense of really why you're coming back and looking at this again and what kind of land are you, what percentage of ag land are you really thinking about?
Yeah, so why this area? And I'm just jotting down the other questions I don't get. We have an interconnection agreement in hand. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Can we face the camera?
Yeah, so sorry. Sorry. So, why this area? We have an interconnection agreement in hand with PJM.
So, that's just a place where you can connect with the grid? That simply ends up by those big transmission lines they cross?
Yeah, so it's actually, the interconnection agreement is the contract between the customer, the developer, Vesper, and the utility or regional transmission operator. In our case, it's the RTO, Regional Transmission Operator, and that's PJM. So, we've gone through the interconnection process, which, we have a 101 sheet on the interconnection process. It's extremely complex. It's different in every region. But the interconnection process is notoriously cumbersome and long. It's where PJM studies our project and the injection of that amount of megawatts onto the electrical grid to see what happens when you put that much energy on that grid at that location, what failures result. Just like an electrical circuit breaker in your house, if you plug too many things in one outlet, you're going to pop a breaker. If there's an electrical engineer in the room that wants to give a better analogy, that's how I think about it. But we have already gone through that study process. We've negotiated an agreement with PJM, and so we have this asset, which is that interconnection agreement. It would take years for another company to start today. The average queue time is about five years. So, for another company that came out to Green County today, if they were just getting into the interconnection queue, they would not have an interconnection agreement for about five years, depending.
There's a way to get into the queue right now as well, so.
Yeah, so there's a whole fact sheet on this. I'm happy to talk in greater detail or host an education session on this topic with an electrical engineer present, so they can verify everything I say.
So, you have an asset, and there are copies of this over there?
Yes, and there are two pages, just FYI. But yeah, so that's to your first question.
So, you have an asset, and it's like a golden ticket to the grid.
Exactly.
High-key word, it was so far denied, and if you leave the area, you leave that asset.
Yeah, so the interconnection agreement isn't project-specific. It can be recycled, so to speak, and that's what we would hope to utilize, but it doesn't say, you know, you have to put the solar panels right by that interconnection point. So, we have flexibility on siting, on design. The constraint we face is we can only build up to 175 megawatts, because that's what we've agreed to with PJM. And the question about what percentage of ag land? We are flexible on siting. So, if there's a site that has poor quality soils that we should look into, or a brownfield site, or anything like that, we're happy to explore those opportunities. A typical, like, rule of thumb for solar developers is we look for five to 10 acres per megawatt. We usually start by leasing on the 10 side, 10 acres per megawatt, and then we have to study all of the constraints that take land out off the table. So, hydrology, topography, the geotechnical constraints, environmental constraints, all of those things reduce the amount of land we can actually build on. So, at the end of the day, the panels only end up being sited on about five acres per megawatt.
So, but in this, in this region, if you were talking about up to 175 or 150 or 100 megawatts, of the ag land in the region that you could access, what percent, more or less? Is it 5%? Is it 100%? Is it, you know, what's?
I don't know, but I can tell you nationally, there's a bit of misinformation about the amount of land, ag land, that's being taken out of production due to solar. It's a common trope of opposition groups. What we, what, not we, Vesper, but the industry has found is residential and commercial development is taking about 3% of agricultural land out of production every year annually, whereas solar is taking less than 1%. I can, I believe actually we might have a fact sheet on this.
I don't know. I see it in the pilot, it's a new one. We just had made with a lot of graphs, so we can definitely, anybody wants that, give me your email address, and we'll make sure you get it out tonight.
But at the county level, I'm not sure.
I can have calculations.
Yeah, Green County is amazingly robust, so we can probably get you a number.
Ben Crandall?
Yeah, I've got two points. I'll try to make them quick. Mostly comments, a quick question at the end. So, I've been studying solar energy for most of my life. I was gonna, I started college over 20 years ago as a chemical engineer because I wanted to get into solar energy. And I've been an investor for most of my life as well, so I understand the industry both on the policy level and on the technical level pretty well. So, the first thing I want to say is the interconnection thing is a big deal, because it's like the big limiting factor. We all know that we need to go renewable for climate change and other reasons, and the interconnection is like one of the biggest limiting factors. There's other geopolitical things in terms of the price of panels are way too expensive in the U.S. because of our policy, but that's, let's put that aside. But the interconnection thing, it's like there's not a lot of great options geographically for the interconnection, and so there's a reason why that has to be prioritized for us to transition as quickly as possible. And so, if there's an opportunity here, I personally think that's a good thing to look into. In terms of the impact on agriculture, agriculture is getting disrupted significantly over the next decade, couple of decades. First of all, 40 million acres of ethanol is kind of always, we transition to EVs. So, that's a huge amount of land that already is going to get taken out of agriculture for ethanol. Then there's this, there's some other more technical food stuff that I could get into. There's like, there's some new technologies that are going to displace a lot of animal agriculture, and that's another side thing, but that's going to also displace lots of agricultural land. So, I personally don't think the argument of like, we need that land for agriculture. I think that that's the past, but I don't think that's where we're headed as a culture and as an economy. Solar, for it to really displace the fuels we're using, has to be low-cost. And so, like, the more we do debate this kind of thing, this adds to the cost. The more they're spending on community engagement and, you know, grants and all the rest of it, like, I mean, personally, I think, like, we just need to be building solar, and we need to be building it in an environmentally sustainable way and like as quick as possible. That's my personal feeling. And so, like, the more hoops we make people jump in through, the more expensive it is for everybody and the less solar we end up getting installed nationally. And then thinking about where those electrons are ended up using, whether they're used in our community or elsewhere, it's like, energy is energy, and like, it doesn't matter which electrons go where, like, that's, it makes absolutely no difference. It drives down the cost for everybody as we get lower costs. You know, solar's the lowest-cost form of energy. The more solar there is, the lower the cost of electricity for everybody. And so, like, the more we scale up, the quicker we scale up, the cheaper everybody's electricity gets, including ours. So, and then I guess the last thing I'd have to say is, I agree with the pesticide issue. I don't want pesticides getting into our water, and so whatever way we can do to make sure that there's no pesticides getting, you know.
Herbicides.
Herbicides, yeah, herbicides, thank you. I agree with that.
Just a quick comment on the herbicide issue. I care about that also.
Teresa Worchus.
Oh, sorry.
Teresa Worchus.
And just to comment, we live across from a large amount of farmland and have experienced being sitting outside and helicopters coming down and spraying and having a cloud of poison. My husband and I were farmers outside of this area before that, and neighbors sprayed all over. I feel like I would be less exposed to herbicides and pesticides by having the controlled environment of the solar farms. The other thing is that my husband and I were farmers up in Shelby County, as many young farmers, we financially couldn't make a go of it during the farmer's crisis. It's a horrible experience to go through. I so support anything that enables family farmers to continue to farm and to have a steady source of income is just so valuable if we want to protect our farmers. So, I really support this. Robert? I'm sorry, trigger that. Very much so.
Are you Robert?
Yes. Thank you. Yeah, I very much support the idea of solar, but I like the idea of setbacks from the road. You know, I think that's really important in this community because our community depends on tourism.
Right.
But I want to know, you said that that's going to happen, but if you find that you can't afford it and you don't do it, what's our recourse?
That's a good question.
Because it happens a lot in environmental building that people promise a building is going to be super green, and then they take it all out as they build.
Do you mean, so, well, when we develop a project, we would build the setbacks into the design from as early as the first design?
My question is, if you change the design because of cost overruns, what do we do?
Can it be changed because of cost overruns?
That's what I'm thinking about in my head, is we get to, you get so far into the design where you're really not making that type of change. What would probably get sacrificed is the production of the facility. So, rather than being a 100-megawatt facility, it drops down to a 75% or 75-megawatt facility because we just lost that land to the setback. But our contracts, we could write that into a lease agreement and be legally binding. So, we'd have to figure out a way to make it work. Yeah.
So, I do think if you're going to, almost that kind of thing ought to be in the lease agreements.
Yeah, and it can be.
But I really support your project.
Thank you. And I want to also just add to Hannah, what she said. We heard about, we've been hearing, we know that setbacks are important to you, not just from the roads, from the Little Miami River, and we are committed to those. That is something that we decided from the beginning, when we decided, when we were talking about new project, that was a priority. So, I think I can confidently say that's something that we are committed to, and we will adhere to the setbacks.
Is it part of the permit process, like, we're permitting something, is it vacant?
Yes, yeah.
I appreciate your commitment, but I think it should be written in.
Well, it will be, it absolutely will, but yeah. We'll make sure of it.
And yeah, to your point, Marlene, the permitting process would also tie our hands to whatever was in the design.
Teresa, do you follow? I know about the details of this, but my understanding is that the Ohio Power Sitting Board recently updated requirements for solar development and includes specifications for setbacks, ag fence, no chain link fences, visual screening, pollinator habitat, drainage monitoring repair, noise studies, and other kinds of requirements. And then they've also developed a good neighbor agreement program, which provides some compensation or benefit to neighbors for disruption due to construction and some aesthetic changes, and that's best practice in the developmental process and something that we should ask for.
So, just on that, that is something Vesper has committed to in the past, and we will continue to.
And we would be beholden to it for OPSC permitting.
Yeah.
But we were doing it before then.
Do you know what the required setbacks are at this time? Are they 50?
I want to say that it got increased. It was 50 at one point. I think they upped it in this latest, but the 300 is much greater.
It's well beyond the requirement. And again, that was something that we were very adamant about when we were talking about new project, particularly the Little Miami watershed. We wanted to make sure that it was as far back as possible, so.
But I can provide more information on the OPSC permitting process if you'd like to follow up on that.
Thank you. And the Aviation Energy Center, one pager, so about this new project, again, we're still in design or isn't an exact size or exact location, but that is written in here. There's also some other information on pollinators and sheep and some links to websites, so some good information here. If you didn't grab that, please grab it on your way out.
And our website also has an open forum for asking questions, so if you think of something later this evening, yeah.
Anybody besides Sharon, if I guess some other people, yes? Lamar, Franklin?
Yes, I have a question for the trustees. My concern is property rights. I've worked 50 or 60 years, and I don't like to admit it, but to buy a farm, I think I should have the right to do what I want with it. Beyond that, I'm not here to vote in favor or against. My concern is property rights, and I would like to ask the trustees, how much money did you allot to pay lawyers to fight this?
Do you have a total done?
Initially, it was 15,000, and right now, it's open-ended. I think we've done another 3,000, so at this point, 18,000.
Open-ended?
We didn't, didn't make another after the 15,000. When it got into the appeals, we don't have, we haven't set a limit.
Yeah, and I understand about the property rights, Lamar. However, the nature of zoning is determining what we can do. I mean, do you have, do you have the right to put 100 houses on your land? Do you have the right to put a McDonald's? I mean, at some point, we've decided as a society, we have zoning and that we put the public interest and some planning thought in it, but I understand what you're saying, so I don't see how, I don't see how solar is different than other types of zoning, but...
Well...
I mean, I can't do a... I mean, I can't do it.
According to the zoning, we can put solar in there, except for the siting board, they decided no. And the trustees have decided because of their personal opinion, in my opinion, to pay lawyers to fight this. Like I say, I'm not in favor of it. I have no contracts with the solar, but I don't think it's right for the trustees because of their personal opinions to use taxpayer money, my money, to pay lawyers to fight it.
Thank you, Lamar. Drew Deal?
Yes, just on the subject, I guess it's a matter of public record, what is the hourly rate that the attorneys are being paid? What's their billing rate?
I'd have to look that up. I could probably find a bill. I can send you an email, but that doesn't answer it in public.
You have hired somebody and you didn't know the rate per hour? Is that right?
At the time, we did, and I don't remember it.
Jim?
What was your first name?
Jim. All this stuff is just dolphin' show. I mean, we've heard the same thing over and over from this, it'll be about the sixth project manager on this thing. It's about the third company's ownership on this thing. We're talking about lawyers. I go to Columbus and each township has one lawyer representing them. And a lot of them donated a lot of their time and because the townships are strapped. And when I go to Columbus, there's a team of lawyers that Vesper comes in and another room behind that room with a whole body of people on laptops doing this. So they had a team of about 12 or 20 attorneys and we had one per township. So don't go into it costs us anything. All this stuff is costing us more time and sacrificing our time and efforts to not do away with solar. This isn't, it never been an issue with me and I've tried to make this clear, is I'm not against solar, I'm against where the proper places to put this stuff is, how to implement, put them on rooftops, take the government money that all these, the Vesper and all these other solar companies are giving and build materials out of these homes, these factories, the glass, the rooftops, streets, between the medium strips, all these things. Take the extra money that, but quit giving the tax dollars to these mega, mega tar hedge fund companies. The only reason they're in this thing is because there's a lot of money to be made. It's heavily subsidized. If it didn't have money to be made, they wouldn't be in this thing. Give it to Lamar if he wants to put solar up, give it to him and he can put 25 acres out there for his personal use and sell it back to the grid. Let the state do that, let Mike DeWine come up with some stuff and our local farmers say, but there's not one farmer in this room and there's not one farmer in this whole solar proposal that is suffering financially. There's not. There's four, fifth generation farmers in here and it's about the money to them too. It's not about preserving farmland. I think it's for the next opportunity to take that cash and go buy more $10,000 acre ground. That's all this is, is money.
Andrew, please.
My name is Scott Feith and if this is not an appropriate time to do this, I'll be happy to let you drive the rescheduling, but I actually have comments I'd like to make to the trustees. It's not a question for Vesper. If you'd rather me do that later, that's quite all right.
It's fine, no.
All right. I have been closely following this issue since it came up and it's been just monumentally disappointing to me. Of course, the outcome was disappointing, but even more disappointing to me was the process by which it happened. I thought, well, we've got this power siting board, we're going to have testimony, we're going to have facts introduced, people are going to be evaluating, the argument's pro and con, it's going to be a rational decision, and it was none of that. It was absolutely none of that. The vaunted meeting that the county commissioners held on November 15th of '21, where hundreds of people got up to speak and the power siting board was there, all they did was make checkmarks in the column of whether people spoke for or against. It didn't make any difference what you said, it was, were you for or were you against? And I would encourage you as trustees of our township to be better than that. I hope you'll apply reason and logic. I hope you'll make every effort to get the full opinion of as many of your constituents as possible. I appreciated your introduction, Mr. Mootcher, and the background on all of that. I understand you're playing with your hands tied behind your back, but please do not allow this to be a case where the loudest voice in the room gets taken to be the facts or the opinions of the residents of Miami Township. I don't think it is. I think what we saw in the previous case, the Kingwood case, where we had, and I've said this a number of times, a very well organized opposition group who spoke loudly and often, but 200 people is the number that's frequently cited as to how many people there were. And that represents, I'll let you do the math on that, what 200 people represents as a percentage of 269,000, which is the population of Green County. I really believe, and I have some experience of late, with a very thorny public policy problem we had concerning our school district. And as all of you know, it was divisive, it was agonizing, and eventually, I believe, one of the things that helped us resolve that was we did some surveying. We got into the thick of it with people and said, please tell us, what are your thoughts about this specifically, not just for and against? So I would hope that we'll see something of that kind from you, our township trustees. I didn't move here because the community was regressive. I wanted to live in a progressive place that looked to the future, that looked toward, that looked at the big picture. And so all of this talk of, well, you know, if we aren't going to get to use the electricity, it's, you know, that's meaningless. Electricity is a commodity. 35 years or 37 years may seem like a long time, but believe me, it's inside that window of the point of no return. And I for one believe the scientists when they tell us that we've got to do everything we can, everything we can, in order to address this climate change problem now. I would hope you'll be able to navigate the trickiness of this and make this a problem to be solved rather than blame to be laid. And let's work with Vesper or whoever company is willing to work with us. And let's work with the folks that are against this. But we ought to be able to do better than was done before. It was, the previous experience was a disgrace and that's what I have to say.
So what the township trustees are determining are whether or not we're going to weigh in as intervenors. I mean, as far as large solar goes, that's, you see our.
And also, we don't have a specific plan.
What do you mean?
I mean, intervenor is way beyond where we're at now. If there's a new plan being proposed, your relationship and presentation is totally different than what we got three or four years ago. And who knows, maybe collaboration process you're advocating will come up with something different.
We're here for that, that's why we're here.
But still, the township doesn't mediate that.
No, I understand. I'm just encouraging you to try and set an example here. Let's be better than what we saw from Columbus. The politicization of the whole power siting process scares me to death. You know, there might be a reason why those kinds of things weren't initially done by townships and counties. And, you know, the Green County Commissioners talk about preserving agricultural land and where are they all from? Oh, yes, Beaver Creek. Anybody's driven over to Beaver Creek lately knows they're not worried about preserving agricultural land for residential development, are they? Thanks for listening.
Kate LeVeykant?
Yes, I'm going to echo a few points and I am newer to this dialogue diving in, so I just want to acknowledge that. The first thing I'd like to say is, I support the idea of solar because we're in a climate emergency, because 2023, the United Nations has determined is the hottest year on record So I like the idea of having a utility sized solar farm here in Miami County. I know that it will bring income to us, that it will be helpful. I know that it's a non-polluting business despite, to my understanding so far, despite claims to the opposite. And I do think solar can help small farmers retain their small farms and that that is not insignificant. Not to mention the agrivoltage option of combining the two, which more and more, as I read, is becoming a more common practice and a useful way to have the benefit of agriculture and the benefit of solar. I recommend, a few things that I have read, Farmer's Guide to Going Solar is published by the United States Office of Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy. I found it very edifying regarding those claims. The Electric Power Research Institute Report on Solar Power Safety for Farmland, I recommend. I'll send these comments into the trustees. And the November 30th, 2022 Forbes article titled, "Fossil Fuel-Funded Opposition Is Blocking America's Clean Energy Transition," I recommend, was very edifying for me. I'd like to comment just briefly about the idea that solar farms should not be placed on farmland. It is true that farmland is decreasing, but the primary problem is urbanization. So trustees and zoning people have the opportunity to help curb urbanization, which is the primary danger. The primary reason we are losing farmland, other than climate change, is urban sprawl. And I recommend to everyone who has a concern about farmland preservation, the idea that the important thing to look at is how do we curb that urban sprawl? And I think that zoning and township might be able to play an important role there. So those are my main points and I appreciate the trustees' attention.
You said you would share links to those articles?
I will, I will send that in my comments.
Lauren Shouse?
Yes.
I have some questions that you may have already answered and I just didn't hit the details and it's all logistical and timeline and stuff. So the interconnection agreement with PJM, when was that instituted? What year?
I don't want to miss quote. Can I bottle up what they said?
Sure, yeah. But was it, it was before, before Kingwood started work?
Yes.
That's all I get.
Well, before they applied for a permit.
Gotcha. So Kingwood is still being considered before the Ohio Supreme Court or no?
Yes.
So if it is denied, then this will go ahead, is that the idea?
Not necessarily. So we are bound to 175-megawatt project or projects. There could be two smaller projects that move forward. There could be one project. If we obtain the OPSC permit for Kingwood, we can apply all the design considerations that we receive from the community to that project instead. It's really a matter of what the community wants and how we can best incorporate that.
And then last question, if, hold on, it kind of went out of my head. I guess if Kingwood is denied and we go ahead with a new project, will the same process, will we be going through the same process that we went through with Kingwood? Will it be the same, will it take six, five or six years again?
That's a great question. We hope not. That's the plan. We would hope that we would apply for a permit application and we wouldn't have as many intervenors or as much opposition because we would have designed that project and got to the community from day one.
Appreciate it. That's a, oh, sorry.
I do want to add on that just real quick. We do, we will still have to hold two public hearings. So the voices of the people will still be heard, even if this is word, and we'll still have to hold two public hearings. Plenty of opportunity for feedback and for comments.
And we would hope to hold many more meetings than that while we design this new project. Thank you.
Michelle Burns of, can I say, of Tecumseh Land Trust?
Sure, yeah, I'm here in my official capacity. So most of our concerns were laid out in our public comments, so you all have seen those. So just to say though, I really appreciate Kate's comment about urbanization and that being the biggest threat, because it is. But I also just want to throw out there that, you know, staying away from our prime soils would be, of course, our biggest concern because not all soil is created equally. So as much as energy is energy, soil is not soil and it is a finite resource. So I always just like to remind people that it's a resource just like any other, water, anything else. And then I just kind of wanted to just, one clarification on the process that we went through for the Ohio Power Siting Board, if I could, so I'm sorry this isn't directed to you guys.
No worries.
And particularly in the idea of having to hire a lawyer, I mean, to be, to have a seat at the table at the power siting board, the only way to do that is to be what's called an intervenor, whether you take a stand on the issue or don't. Such as Tecumseh Land Trust was an intervenor, although we did not have a stand on the issue, but we wanted a seat at the table. And you do really need to hire an attorney to be able to do that function. And so it may be unfortunate that all these townships and the counties haven't do that, but it is a legal process and you are giving sworn testimony. And so it's very nice to have legal representation. I just kind of wanted to mention that because the process is kind of obscure and, but it, you know, I thought it was worthwhile to have a seat at the table. And so I just wanted to make that clarification.
Yeah, thank you. Looking for someone who hasn't spoken yet. Andrew Deal, again?
Well, I can speak. Look, I'm going to ask, I live in Cincinnati. I don't live here. I grew up here. I'd like to say something, but I'm going to leave it up to the people who are opposed to this project. I'm going to speak in favor of it, but if you don't want me to, I won't because I'm not, I don't belong to the township.
It's solar regional. I mean, it's a topic that needs to be discussed in the best places to implement solar. And so more welcome, I'm encouraged.
If you're okay, because I'm, you know, I'm an interloper at this point. I grew up here, but that was a long time ago, as you can tell. Okay, well, I'm going to skip my remarks here. I'm just going to say that I've been following this for a couple of years and everybody sitting up there knows what I'm going to say. Basically, my point is that climate change is real, it's happening now, the science is clear. We are in the beginning stages of a radical change in climate throughout the climates throughout the earth, which will last for thousands of years. This is of a historic consequence and the science is clear that it's due to human activity. It's primarily because we're putting too many greenhouse gases into the atmosphere, which block the solar radiation from, once it hits the earth and goes, tries to go back into space, it blocks it from going back into space. That's why some people call it greenhouse effects, like putting an extra blanket around. And what happens here, or whether it's admitted in China or India or Green County or whatever, the same gases are going to go around the whole atmosphere. the same gases are going to go around the whole atmosphere for the next 100 years or so. Doesn't matter where it comes from. So it's a global problem that has to be solved locally. We can't control what China does, and I don't trust China, but we can control what we do. As someone said, this is the hottest year on record in at least 125,000 years. Sea levels are rising. Agriculture around the world is being threatened. It's being literally too hot for some places for people to live. The United Nations is projecting, in the next 20 years or so, climate-related migration demand of around a half a billion people, who are going to be trying to leave where they don't have water, they don't have food, or it's too damn hot. And who's going to take them? The ocean is getting warmer. It's reaching the point where it can't take in any more carbon dioxide. The water's going acidic. The coral reefs are disappearing. Everything is up for grabs right now. Sea level's rising. Our own coasts are threatened. It's a crisis. It's an existential crisis, but it has to be addressed locally. And so I think when anybody considers a solar project, they have to do it in that perspective. It should be assumed that the project should go through unless there's a good reason why it shouldn't, and I don't see a good reason here. And I agree that this community can work cooperatively to come up with something that's great, that we can all be proud of, and that respects the concerns of local people. I think we can do that. The one thing I don't like is the name of this project. What the heck is the?
Aviation Energy Center.
Aviation Energy Center. To me, that's the General Electric Jet Air, you know, jet engine production site in Evendale. Or that could be, apparently, the Wright-Patterson Air Force Base National Museum for aerospace that's going solar. That should be, what should be referred to as the Aviation Energy. I think this is something that the county could be proud of. It could be an asset. It could bring people in with everything else. So I think the name should be the Green County Solar Farm or Field, the Green County Solar Field, something to be proud of.
We're here for feedback, so.
Like, as I said, this is my last point. As I said to somebody else today, in the nuclear industry, they don't want to be known as somebody who might have explosions. So in the Nuclear Regulatory Commission language, there's no such thing as an explosion at a nuclear power plant. Instead, it's called an energetic disassembly. Well, to me, the Aviation Energy Service Center, or whatever it is, be, what the heck is that? You should be, we should be proud, or you should be proud, shout it out, say, this is the Green County Solar Field, and be proud of it. Hold it out as an asset. That is something to be hidden. So thank you very much.
More? Lois?
Yeah. I wanted to say that I'm really excited that we have the potential to create a design that takes into account our preferences and our concerns. And one of mine that I'm personally excited about, and personally want to see, what I think other people do too, is a combination of agriculture and solar. I think that they, I mean, based on my research, I think they can go together, and it's probably not going to look like row crops like we have now, but it's still agriculture. And I really would like to see that, and I am really excited by that. I also am, I guess, excited, that's three times I've used that word, but I'm also excited that we have the chance to develop something that I think is truly innovative, a project that will inspire others and can be used around the state as a model, and maybe even across the country, you know, for other places to have similar climates, similar things going on, you know, rain patterns and temperature patterns. Like, we can be a leader in something. I find that really exciting, that Ohio, we, Green County could be a leader in Ohio, and Ohio could be a leader in the country. That's exciting to me. Okay, four times.
I say it all the time.
Five?
Okay, five. Thank you.
Could I just say something?
Yes.
I'm going off of that. So again, Jackie Friedley, and I am with Vesper. I'm the Director of Community Engagement. I just want to say, it was mentioned earlier, you know, there's two, you know, hearings that you have to have, and I think for a long time, that was sort of what the industry in general, Vesper, I believe, during Kingwood, I was not here during that, so I will take your blame, that is my job, took as the standard. That was the standard that was set. They thought that that was right. We obviously know that's not enough. That is why we are here today with the Aviation Energy Center that is shapeless and possibly nameless and sizeless, right?
She has the idea of perhaps letting the community name it. I think that's a great idea.
I've done that before, and it's great. It's really fun, because we do want to have this interaction, you know? And so it's not lip service, and I'm sorry that the team that was here before, I'm sure they did their best, but they didn't engage properly, maybe with you guys, or with you, or whomever it might be. It is different, and I really do hope you take up the team on engaging. We know how important this is. Not that you need to know anything about me, but I am from a very small ag community in Mather, Minnesota, sugarbeets, weeds, sunflowers, the whole thing. This stuff matters to me, and that is why I work here. It is not for anything else. I truly believe it is a way to bring rural America into that leadership position that we all know we should be in. So thank you all.
One thing I forgot to mention earlier is that I actually have worked for a solar installation company, and I lived in Eugene, Oregon, so on rooftops, as has been mentioned. And it's rooftops, you know, medians, parking lots, like, none of that is, it's not a substitute for large-scale solar. Large-scale solar is, has to be the primary way that we do it. Just it's way too hard to get the bright siding for all the roofs, because they're not facing the sun in the right way, and they all need their own inverter, and they all need their own process. It's just, it's way too cumbersome. It takes way too long to get the amount of solar that we actually need to get installed. So like, if we actually want to address, you know, both this energy thing that we, you know, getting sustainable energy and for, you know, people to have the climate concerns, like, for me, I've been concerned about climate change my whole life, but it's, I don't see it as do or die. Like, that's not where I'm coming from. But I do think that we're going to transition to solar one way or another. It's going to be the cheapest form of energy, and I don't think we're going to continue to need as much agricultural land as we currently do. And I don't think that, you know, rooftops is really a viable solution. I mean, you have to maintain all these different solar panels and all these different roofs, and like, in terms of having the maintenance, having the inverters, it's like, it's way better just have it sited in one place, you go through one process to get it approved, as opposed to a million different people's processes. It's just, it's, you can't compare with large scale with, like, it's both and, like, both are necessary, but the large scale's got to be where the majority of it comes from. So that's the one thing I have to say. My, I have a question just from the trustees, because I, you know, I'm new to this process and this debate, so forgive me if this has been, but I didn't quite understand from Chris's introduction to this. Is, are the trustees obligated to intervene just because, like, I understand if it's coming, if the process of the siding is coming up from a local level, you know, it sounds like they're obligated to go by the zoning commission, but if it's coming down from the state, are the trustees actually obligated to intervene, or is this a choice of the trustees?
It's a choice. We were requested from the other surrounding townships and intervenors to join.
I just want to voice my disapproval of that.
Just one final thing. I love whoever it was that made the point about Ohio being a model for the state and possibly be, that was a terrific comment, where I would so much rather live in a place that was that, as opposed to the place that the Ohio Capital Journal described in an article this summer. Ohio is currently leading the nation in that we have 10 counties that have outlawed, basically outlawed solar anywhere in the county. And that's where our county government is trying to go. And I think it's a fair question to ask, who would have an interest in that? And why? And do we want to help them with that? So there's a, I would give anything to have come up with this saying, but I have to credit it to this gentleman over there, who's, I believe, Eric Johnson. Did I get that right? And I'll let you, I'll let you correct me, or you can say it yourself, but just this week, Mr. Johnson made the point that he felt it was really important to him that his grandchildren knew he did everything he could. And what more can you say?
Your name, please?
I'm Fred Stockwell. I was happy to hear Mr. Mutra's sort of initial expression of how the process goes, but I might have misunderstood. I get the impression that the township trustees can or cannot be an intervener, and they can or cannot approve regulations that are provided or offered to them from the zoning commission. So that sort of meeting like this also occur at a public meeting of the zoning board, which sets rules and makes a land use plan for the county and the township. Is that where agreement or disagreement about whether a siding is appropriate would first occur?
If it's smaller than 50 megawatts, our zoning will apply. We are in the process of reviewing, not we, the zoning commission is in the process of.
Creating.
Guidelines, rules, along the lines of their current thinking, Richard tried to capture.
He expressed the process.
If it's 50 or above, it goes to the Power Siting Board, and we could be an intervener, which means we have the right to comment in detail, or we could ignore it.
Okay, so if Vesper puts 49 megawatts a proposal in this township, and 49 megawatts in a proposal in such and such a next township, that suggests that that would be applicable to the local zoning. So if their project happens to be 30 here and 50 there, or 90 there, it would, some of that would be state, and some of that would be county, and some of that would be local.
They could do three 49-megawatt proposals in, they could present it as three different ones.
In the same township.
In our township, if that's what they chose. We might not see it that way.
But for a resident of the township, which I am, to express my interest or disinterest in something, I almost felt like listening to you, that I need to go to the zoning committee's meetings, not to your meeting.
Correct. Yeah. Not that we're not listening.
Yes, you are listening. Thank you. Just one brief comment, please. I think that there's a difference between the political relationship between what happens, let's say, in a township, and the legal relationship. You have a limited legal authority in matters of large projects, or no authority. But the Siding Board looks to local government actions as an indicator of whether there is support or opposition to such things as solar projects. So the point, if, for example, even though, I mean, they'll say, well, all these townships intervened, that means they must be really concerned about this. And they interpret that, either honestly or otherwise, as public opposition and political opposition to the project. So I just want to point that out. Yes?
I'd like to just clarify a little bit there. So just because you're intervening does not mean you are intervening in favor or opposition. You can intervene independently.
But then you file, you do filings which indicate what your opinion is of the project.
You can be independent, like I said, and still have a valid input or a, so part of the only way, and this is what Michelle was getting at, to provide meaningful input to that hearing process is to be an intervener, because the judge is paying attention to what is said in the testimonies and in the cross-examinations. So, and a lot of that, it happens actually in writing and not, not in a live hearing.
Not auditorium. I agree, I agree with you totally. Because I'm familiar with the process.
So while you can either oppose or support, you can also be independent, and it's important to be involved one way or another to have meaningful input.
Or you may just have one particular concern. You just, somebody might intervene, saying, I'm concerned about this issue. And that's, once that's resolved, they withdraw. They say, okay, I'm good with it. It just depends on the individual situation.
Just for clarification, what was the substance of the intervention in the past?
Opposition.
It's been opposition. Is that, is that, that's true?
Let's, we'll put on our website the statements made on behalf of Miami Township, including stuff I wrote, and Eric Sauer volunteered his expertise around water runoff and soils, and what happens, it goes on our website.
I've got one more thing I'd like to say, too, is that they can say all what they are wanting to say here to make you believe all this stuff, or whatever opinion you want to leave here with, but they're not the ones that's got the ultimate say in this thing. Minds have been changed to different people over these past few years. We've got different people saying things that aren't holding true, and it's just like this big solar complex that went up in Madison County. You say that it's going to save all this farmland. They took 3,000 acres up there, and you're saying it's going to, you know, be so eco-friendly and all this, they take five foot off the top of the hills and fill in natural wetlands just to be as flat as they could, and put their lasers on it, and put panels all the way through there in order for these things to be, because that's the easiest way for them to do it. The gentleman that was farming that farm committed suicide two weeks after he got kicked off the farm because the person from out east let his, let the farm build, basically for money.
So, can we just drop that?
Sure. I'm not free to.
Yeah. Hi, Joe. I'm Lindsay Borkman, as you know. I can't, all three of us are new. We weren't here when Kingwood was first issued, when it was first put together. We are here now. We are trying to do it differently this time. We want to work with the community. It's not, like Jackie said, it's not lip service. I'm from Jackson. I'm a 4-H Fair girl. I care about the land as well. We are here, if we weren't sincere about getting this project and working with you guys to figure out the best way for this to happen, we would not be sitting here right now.
The problem is, is that you can say all you want to, and it goes back to the people that are running the project and stuff, and they, it falls on deaf ears. They react to the complaints after the fact. A lot of this stuff always gets, fix the problem after the problem arises. It's not fix the problem before and put things in place. Okay.
And our COO has been here, Juan, has been here, sorry, Vice President. He has been here from the beginning. He was here in August. A few of you met him, Lamar, some of our old landowners met him.
The landowners met him?
Yes.
And he was, he was invited to some of the township meetings, but he didn't show up there.
Well, no, he, he was, we met with.
We can bring him.
Yeah, we can get him here. We'll just end it there.
I don't think we have to argue about what happened or not.
Yeah.
If we can, I do hear you saying, for all your good intentions, who really has authority in your organization?
And I'm the project developer. I do have authority. Of course, we have to report to upper management. We make decisions.
So if I ask you to write a contract, your name's going to be on it?
If it's under a certain value. We have levels of authority where we sign contracts, and we are happy to sit down with you and put in writing and sign a contract, not just you personally, but. you personally, but as a county, we can agree to design considerations. We can sign a contract that's legally binding with the county, with the township, most likely as well.
That's why they formed an LLC?
Every project company will farm an LLC.
I know, that's what I'm saying. These big companies have outs on everything. You could have this company today, and in three months, the subsidies stop on these things, and all of a sudden, it goes bankrupt, and it's sit there, now who owns the thing? These decommissioning dozens isn't going to kick in, it's going to go back to the landowners, and then they got to clean it up. There's just too many gray areas on these things yet. Nothing's been...
Can I ask you, what would help, what would help change that? What do you need to see from us, or what do you need to re, what would help, what would help change your mind on that?
Oh, good. Not in the, the size and scale and the players that are in this thing. I just don't, I just don't have credibility in all these large companies that they're putting money in.
That's why we're here. Again, I think my, as she mentioned, Vesper is one of the few companies that has actually invested in a community efforts program, and I'm here to be that liaison for the community, I have been. And the thing is, like, I think our investment is shows by us being here. We could easily just sit and wait for the Supreme Court to figure it out. But we're here, trying to make this happen, in a way that shows that we want to work with you, not just tell you what to do. And we can't make up for the past, we know that. We're trying to do differently, and that's all we can ask.
We'll go Jennifer, and then Tom.
I could ask, what could help us? A lot of the promises that are made, and a lot of the specifics about how the ground will be handled, and who will ultimately be responsible for that, are actually in the lease agreements with the landowners. And up until this point, the local nobody, besides Vesper, Lend Lease, whoever it was, and the landowner, is privy to that information. So all those protections that we keep being promised, we don't see any of that in writing anywhere. And that is one of the, yeah.
That's something that we can change.
That's a really good point. And we can provide, so, this is a really competitive industry. Developers keep their leases under lock and key. Because of the competitive nature, another company could come in, potentially, and take proprietary information from our leases. So we ask that they're not publicized. I would absolutely sit down with you and walk you through a lease, if you want to see exactly what goes into those contracts.
The difficulty with that is, it can be different by leaseholder. So while, you know, I might be able to, while you'll force me to sign it in the A, and I might be able to view it, or you might make me say, "Yeah, I can view it, but you can't share it with anybody else, and oh, by the way, you have to support our program." So, in order to do that, if I'm looking at that, you're still only going to show me the lease for, you know, probably my neighbor, right? But that does not protect anybody besides me, you know? So it's much more than just me, it's everybody that's involved, it's my, it's our trustees. How can they know what pitfalls exist, right? If they are not privy to the agreements that have been made?
And it's common for us to share lease agreements with trustees or county commissioners. We obviously ask for confidentiality, so those don't get continued public record. But we'd be happy to do that, if that's something that would be valued by the community. And additionally, I'll just say, there's a lot of misinformation in this industry. I'm hearing just a lot of things. It's a really complex industry, and I understand why, you know, it might be misconstrued. So we would really appreciate an opportunity to do like a learning session, where we could sit down together and kind of address your concerns point by point. We can bring in subject matter experts, we can really...
Tailor it to what you need, what you need to hear, what you need to listen to.
Because it is extremely complex, there's a lot going on. But there's a lot of pieces of our business, and the solar industry in general, that are just simply misrepresented in the comments, Mr. Frechek, that you had presented. For example, our leases are not very different, landowner and landowner. We lease dozens of landowners' land.
Have you read the leases that are signed right now?
Yes.
I just wanted to be sure.
Yep. There are certain provisions we will add to address specific landowner concerns, but we use the same form for almost every project. We get them tailored to meet state specifications, but they're very minimal changes, because we do have to go get this project financed, right? So we're beholden to a financier. They do not want to be 12 different lease agreements. So there's just a lot of nuances there, that I'd love an opportunity to walk you through.
Yeah.
We have one more comment.
My name's Tom.
Tom.
And, you know, I'm in favor of solar, all right? I have been for the last 25 years, all right? And I've also been in the development industry in central Ohio, you know, when I'm retired, Yellow Springs, because it's a peaceful place, right? And I appreciate everything you've said, but my experience is that any time a real estate project, and that's what really this is, the developer, they can point to a project that they've already completed successfully, that shows that much of what the concerns here have been addressed and completed successfully, through all this different, complex issues, which it is very complex, is very helpful in allaying a lot of these fears, really, because it's all new.
Absolutely.
So if you, if you could, certainly not, hand out the 10,000 pages, but in a synopsis, with a location, you know, with local people, with township trustees, you know, testimonials, that kind of thing, put it together, that would be very helpful.
Tom, on that, we actually have a project that is very near completion, down in Claremont County, called Nessawood. Marilyn got a tour of it over the summer. We're happy to bring you, or anyone else that wants to come, we are happy to have a tour of that. We can speak on that, I'll let Marilyn talk about it, or Hannah talk about it a little bit more, but yes, we have a project that we can point to and show you, that's less than, it's only about an hour away. And it can kind of, I think that that is a good way to show you that, what it looks like.
Yeah, with some background on paper, prior to the tour.
Yeah, absolutely. That's not a problem at all.
Because, you know, then it can be scrutinized from all these different points of view, and various, you know, engineers, urban planners, rural economists, you name it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Jennifer and Joe, we're happy to bring you guys, if you want to come tour, happy to take.
Is Nessawood operational?
No, we have a project in Pennsylvania that started operations in August with the University of Pittsburgh. They're the primary partner on it.
How many megawatts is that?
It's smaller, it's 20 megawatts. And Nessawood is 80 megawatts.
So, you know, 80 is maybe more comparable to where we're going in here.
We did a big ribbon cutting, though, and had a number of elected officials from the area at the Gaucho, solar project over outside Pittsburgh. And we'll do something similar, I would imagine, for Nessawood, it's, it kind of becomes a standard.
When do you expect Nessawood to go on?
Later this spring. If everything goes according to plan, it should be up and running, you know, March, April. You know, construction can always be a little off schedule, but I would imagine we would do some sort of ribbon cutting in May, possibly, maybe June.
Do you have any other operational facilities?
Those are the two right now. There are a few that Lend Lease brought to that point, and then they sold, because they were not an IPP at the time, which, you know, is what you do when you're not an IPP. It's how you make money to grow your business.
Is Vesper an IPO?
Independent power producer. So it basically needs to get owned and operate. If that makes sense, yeah. And so, you know, aviation is next. We have a project that is near completion, probably two years out, I think it is, over in northern Pennsylvania. You know, we really do have a number of projects underway. We're going to start construction on a project out in California. That process is a little bit longer. We're fine, but the state process, just on getting things taken care of, it takes a little longer. That's a battery storage project slightly different, but we're really making a lot of headway moving forward.
We have one more comment from Lamar Sprecklin.
I'm a little confused. What is the purpose of this meeting? Are these comments going to be sent to whom? And I guess, what is the purpose of this meeting?
We were, we wanted to come and introduce the new project, and open dialogue with the community about this new project and ways forward, is what I...
How do you call a new project when it's the same project?
It's not the same project.
Same leaseholders? Same area?
No. We're not utilizing the same land necessarily, unless that's the feedback that we get from the community.
You've got new leases already?
This is a clean slate. We haven't started leasing, we haven't started land acquisition. We're coming here with a clean slate, saying, "Hey, we have an interconnection agreement, how can we use this? How can we make this work?"
Will you be repurposing the leases that you have now for the year?
It depends. We have assignment authority within our lease rights, so technically, you could assign the Kingwood lease to an aviation project, if that ends up being the site that is deemed suitable by the citizens. If it's not, we'll start a new land campaign and go seek new land. It really depends.
Excuse me, when you say aviation project, you're talking solar, right? I think, I think you're just opening yourself up for a lot of out-of-bounds. People are saying, "This is aviation, they're trying to trick us." It's really solar.
You could have been in the conversation.
Oh, yeah, we had.
About, do we name it, do we revise, do we name it, you know? So, understood, but I feel like we could stand if you do them, because people would say, "Oh, this is the same project," even though it is, and, but your point is very well-taken.
Very well.
We debated it for weeks.
And Tom, we talked about it in the meeting a couple of weeks ago. I found it the next morning, and I came to you, yeah.
I think just opening yourself up to charges of misinformation, starting with the title.
I'd like to thank you guys for spending a meeting with us, and for everybody who came and brought your, gave you your time, and...
Did we get Tom's last name?
Tom, what's your last name?
Logston.
Thank you, Tom.
All right.
I'm going to entertain, or, I'm going to make a move that we adjourn for the evening.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you all for coming.